Welcome to Wadsworth History on the Film, a program presented by the Wadsworth Area Historical Society, and designed to record the oral history of Wadsworth for posterity. Today we're going to be making history rather than recording history. And that is that Bruce Darlington is the oldest person in one hundred fifty-five years to serve in a governmental position in the city of Wadsworth. At one time was the village of Wadsworth. Bruce, welcome.
Thank you, Caesar. Good to be here.
No, Bruce, everyone knows who you are because you're on television at least once every two weeks, right?
Yep.
And have been for how many years?
This is my nineteenth year on council.
Nineteenth year, and you didn't get it right yet?
Not yet. I'm trying.
There you go, there's trying. Well, the reason that you're on for nineteen years is that you've got it right so many times. And that's why they keep on bringing you back, and good thing that they do. Bruce, we do know who you are, but we don't know who you are. Tell us about everything from the time that you were... You can skip the prenatal.
Okay.
But from when you were born to where you came to Wadsworth and how you got to where you are and what you do. And I know a lot about you, but I don't know any of those secrets about you. So please tell us.
Well, that's almost eighty-nine years. Do we have enough time?
That might be a problem. That might be a problem.
Anyway, I was born in Wichita, Kansas.
Wichita, Kansas.
And actually, we lived out on a suburban, they called it a suburban, home, which was outside the city limits. I actually started school in a two-room schoolhouse.
No kidding?
There were, it was first through sixth grade in two rooms. And we lived there about a year, and then we moved into the big city, into Wichita.
Into Wichita.
And I started in the Wichita schools, and I was in the Wichita school system until I would have gone into high school. And then my folks moved from Wichita to Osage City, Kansas. Osage City, Kansas was a town, and still is a town, of about three thousand people. And about two hundred in high school. And that's where I went to high school, then graduated high school, went to Baker University in Baldwin City, Kansas. And as I was thinking about that, I thought, there's a lot of towns in Kansas that have, called city. You know, Dodge City, Garden City.
Right, right, right. And they're not even cities.
I know, they're not even cities. And Baker University was in Baldwin City, Kansas. It was just south of the University of Kansas.
And your major was what?
My major was chemistry.
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 And then you went beyond that, or don't you?
And then I went to, well, first I went to University of Illinois for a year in graduate school in physics. And then I had met a girl at Baker. So I wanted to come back to Kansas to go to grad school. So I got accepted to the University of Kansas in the chemistry department. And I went back to Kansas and started in chemistry. And then after a year of graduate school, I got drafted.
I understand that one too pretty well. We're close to the same age, and I have a few years, and I remember. I'm a couple of years older than you are, so that means a little bit more respect, okay?
Oh, I give my elders the most respect. Right, right.
The, um, one thing that I think, as always, I've always admired, is that you have a tremendous amount of background intellectually. You use that, but you have such a good way of making sure that it doesn't come out as kind of an intellectual snob. So that's one of the things that I would like to say about you.
Well, thank you.
Now, this is all I'm going to say, this is going to be good about you, so.
We'll accept that.
We'll work on that, right. Now, when did you come to Wadsworth?
Well, I came to Wadsworth after I graduated KU, got PhD there in chemistry. And I got hired at PPG over in Barberton in their research lab. First, can I tell a few stories about Barberton?
Yeah, let's hear some stories.
Because I've got some fun stories to tell about that. When we came here, we lived in a company house over in Columbia Court in Barberton. And those company houses were Sears and Roebuck prefab houses.
Prefab houses, that's right, exactly.
So my wife, first day I came home, and she'd hung the diapers out on the lot line. There was no dryer in the house. There wasn't even room for refrigerator in the house. It had to sit on the back porch. And so she'd hung the diapers out, and of course, they got covered with fly ash. So she showed them to me when I came home, and she said, "Look at these, just look at these. Either you find me another place to live, or I'm going back to Missouri." Because she was from St. Joe, Missouri. So I, my guy I shared the lab with, who's Russ May, who lived in Wadsworth, said, "Russ, you gotta find me another place to live, or there ain't places to rent in Wadsworth." So he looked around, he found me a duplex on Stratford Street.
On Stratford Avenue, right.
On Stratford Avenue. So within a month, we'd moved to Stratford, and Marcia loved Wadsworth. And so we settled in there, and we lived here for, well, about ten years. And then I got transferred to Corpus Christi. Lived there for almost fifteen years. My kids really were raised in Texas. And they got transferred back to Barberton.
Did you ever come across a Willard Hollinger in Corpus Christi?
Uh, the name's kind of familiar, but I didn't know him.
Of course, he'd be considerably older, but he was a Wadsworth boy.
Yeah.
And he had the same identical pattern, where he was at Barberton. He was born in Wadsworth, and then he worked in Barberton. They transferred him to Corpus Christi, and then he actually died there. He'd been dead for quite some time now, but I just wondered by...
No, he worked at, I mean, you didn't get acquainted working research with a lot of the guys working the plant?
He was kind of a plant manager, too.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if he was in the department or whatever, but he had some kind of administrative position.
No, I just didn't run across him.
Go ahead, John.
So anyway, then got transferred back here. Well, there's an interesting story there, too.
Let's hear it.
Well, we were, they scheduled us, there were thirty-five families that were going to move from Corpus Christi back to Wadsworth, or to Barberton. So they scheduled us to come to look for housing, you know, in groups, so that we weren't all coming at once. So we, I said, everybody asked me, "Where should we live?" And I told them, "Well, of course, Wadsworth," you know. So I scheduled Marcia and I to come up in the first group, so that we'd have her pick a housing. And she had a gallbladder attack, had to have a gallbladder out. And we ended up being in the last group that came. And there were only two houses left in Wadsworth. Could you imagine, with thirty-five families coming? They sucked up all the houses in Wadsworth. So we were lucky, though, we found a house on Winding Way. And we lived there for another eight years, then got transferred to Pittsburgh.
Wow.
And I lived, we lived in Pittsburgh, well, I only worked there a year because then I retired in Pittsburgh and got a job with Mead Paper in Chillicothe, Ohio. And was there eight years. And then, well, there was only place, only one place that we wanted to retire, and that was Wadsworth.
Wadsworth. Tell us about Mead Paper. There's a story that I'd like to tell you once, if it fits here. You worked for Mead Paper?
Yes.
Tell us about Mead Paper.
Well, they were in Corp, in Chillicothe, what they made mostly was paper for Hallmark, for greeting cards.
Right, right.
Which was probably the best paper in the world. It had to be absolutely free of any defect.
Right.
And then they made copy paper, you know, just ordinary copy. And I don't know how much they made of that, but...
A lot of it.
There were probably fifty truckloads a day went out of that plant full of copy paper.
I think, I was at the university at the time, and I had a secretary whose father and her uncle were in some kind of an executive position with Mead Paper. And we had a meeting one time of the various deans and so forth, saying, "We've got to cut down on paper." Well, I knew that Barb's father was the one who was supplying the paper.
Yeah.
And I went back and told her, said, "You better start looking for some food because we're going to cut down your dad from all the paper that he is sending."
Right.
Believe it or not, when you say carloads, we were talking about a carload coming to the university. Not every day, and not every week, but by carloads. That's how much paper we used.
Oh, yeah.
Because we had a thousand professors.
Sure.
And probably two thousand employees altogether, well, three thousand altogether. And everyone used the paper, I mean, over and over and over and over again, the paper. Well, for Mead Paper, then, what did you do?
Then I retired.
You retired?
Retired. Moved to Wadsworth, moved back to Wadsworth.
Nineteen years of working with the city as a councilman, listening to people's problems and troubles and all of those kinds of things does not sound to me like retiring.
Well, I had, I had ten years before I came on council. So I had ten peaceful years, let's put it that way.
Now, what did you, what made you want to become a councilman?
Well, there's a good story there, too.
Let's hear it.
Well, one day Jim Renace called me on the phone, says, and I never can remember this guy's name, but somebody they had picked, you know, the Republicans, if I can mention that name.
Oh, please do.
He said, "No profanity," but anyway, Republic, he said, "We need somebody to fill the spot on the council race because he's not moved into your, into Ward Four yet. He's going to move into Ward Four."
I didn't know who you're talking about.
But do you remember his name?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You can mention it if you want.
Well, I better not.
Okay. Anyway.
His mother and father are very good friends of mine.
Anyway, so he, so I said, "Sure." Well, I had ten days to fill out, get my names on the petition to serve and all that. But I had a lot of friends that helped me, so got the name on the ballot, and time for the election. And Jim Renace called me, said, "He decided not to run. You're it. You're on the ballot." So we had the election, and you remember that story. I won by one vote.
I remember that landslide.
Landslide Darlington, yeah.
Landslide Darlington, right.
Yeah. And that started it all, and since then.
Well, you've been a wonderful person to do this kind of thing for Ward Four. Everyone respects you down there. And not in any way trying to convince anyone into the contrary, but one of the things that I think that you bring to the table anywhere you go is good common sense. Now, let me ask you this question. You were reared in a, in a community down in the middle part of the United States where, and I'm going to say this with all affection, where people go, stay, and die, and never progress beyond that. What was it that brought you to where you are today in terms of the fact that when we talk about the middle part of the United States, we talk about the people who are so stayed in their ways, and you are not?
Well, okay.
What, what changed you? I mean, was it your parents? Was it...?
Well, I guess I'm just who I am, you know. I've, you know, really lived all over the country and done all sorts of different things. The jobs I've had, you know, before, that I haven't even mentioned, you know. I worked for Boeing Airplane Company for a while. They were building B-47s.
Yes.
Worked for that. I worked for Phillips Petroleum Company down in Oklahoma for a while. Was in the Navy. Got to work on rocket propellants when I was in the Navy. And, you know, just, I guess all the people I've met along the way, you know.
Helped to make that, those kinds of... Now, before I get into trouble about saying about Kansas and so forth, I'm thinking of the, um, Oklahoma City, you know, or the stage play.
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma.
Yeah.
They try to emphasize the fact that the people down there are kind of country bumpkins. I'm sure that they're not.
Yeah.
I'm sure that they're not, but I mean, when we hear those things, that's what we think of. But we don't hear, we don't see those things when we look at Bruce Darlington. Now, tell us a little bit about your family. And I need to warn you that if you happen to make a mistake with your grandchildren's names or ages or anything like that, you're in deep trouble.
Okay.
So let's go with your children and then your grandchildren.
Okay, well, my children, I have four children.
Four children.
I have Betsy, Elizabeth.
And what does Betsy do?
She was, she went to Baylor Law School, has a law degree. Now she's teaching school in Longview, Washington. And she has one son, and he has a daughter.
So you have great-grandchildren.
So I have, yes, I have three great-grandchildren. So one's in Washington, that's Naomi. She lives there. And then I have twin boys that were the second born. So I went from one child to three child.
Big hurry.
Three children, a hurry. And one lives in Norton, and he is a diesel mechanic. And he has three daughters. Two of them are married, one had twin boys.
Yep, that'll happen.
So now I have twin boy, great-great-grandchildren. And their names are Maverick and Noah.
Okay.
And then...
Now, you know that you're going to have to name the other ones because...
Well, only, there's just the three. There's Naomi, Maverick, Noah. Those are the three great-grandchildren.
Oh, that's it?
I just have three great-grandchildren.
Okay, then you're safe.
Okay, I'm safe. And then the other son is, he's a artist, a, what do you call it, computer graphic type artist.
Oh, yeah.
And he's unmarried, so he has no children. And then the youngest daughter, Julie, she lives in Wadsworth, and she has three children.
And three, she has children as well.
So I have seven, seven grandchildren, and...
And you have one close by.
Have one close by.
Which is very, very nice.
That is very nice. She's the youngest, and...
Yeah, because as we kind of age a little bit, it's always helpful to have some of your kids that are able to help. Let me ask you a couple of questions about some of the things that you've done in the city that would make you very, very proud, and you probably have never told anyone about it. But now you're going to be forced to tell us.
Okay.
What, what kinds of things did you think of and able to get the rest of the council to work with?
Well, it's hard to think of something that, you know, was just my idea that went forward, but I can think of a lot of projects that we've done since I've been on council that have been...
Some of those, I'd say probably, I was thinking of those, I thought, "That's something you might ask."
Oh, yeah. And of course, a community center came up. I thought, "What a wonderful facility this is." And anytime I show it to people, they're so impressed of what we have in Wadsworth.
It is.
And, well, mostly the north, you know, when we redid the North End and High Street and all that, it's been both pleasurable and disappointing in that we have all that, you know, land to the east that was developed, and all the streets were laid out, and nothing's gone in there yet.
Right.
And to me, that's been disappointing, I wish. The other is the match, you know, or not the match, the brickyard.
Brickyard.
The brickyard, you know, we got St. Edward's in, which was very nice. Now we've got all that other wonderful land, and it seems so ideal. It's got close to the major highways, it has the railroad. I just can't understa, I know there's a lot of cleanup needs to be done there.
Well, it's a, have you ever been down through that back end?
No, I haven't.
Well, I spent quite a bit of time down there in my youth, and also as a young man, and probably, oh, not too terribly much when I got older because it was too hard to go up and down those hills there. But the terrain is horrible, just absolutely horrible. The one thing that has always been, incidentally, I think that I was the person responsible for bringing St. Edward's down there because I'm on the board of St. Edward's. And I, at one point, they were going to expand, and I said, "We have a wonderful place in Wadsworth where you could expand for very, very little money." Because nothing, it wasn't, I mean, the land wasn't going for very much down there at the time because it was wasteland is what it was. And they went to look at it, and they said, "Well, that sounds like a pretty good idea." And the next thing I know, we start building. So that part, I think they bought forty-eight acres or something of this nature. But the rest of the two hundred eighty acres of, I think it's two hundred eighty acres, isn't it? The rest of the two hundred eighty acres is very, very difficult, and particularly down by the kilns.
Oh, okay.
And then a little bit east of the kilns, there's this huge hill. But it would make, I've always wanted, in my own mind, I always wanted to have a theme park down there. Because you have a railroad, railroad tracks are still going in there. You could have a coal mine up against that big hill. And you could also have a, well, you could use the kilns for a lot of things. I mean, you have to clean them out a little bit. You could probably have a meeting place and eating place, and, you know, even a working brickyard.
Right.
But the one thing that I would hate to see would be to have some kind of of a disastrous kind of entity, such as a dump or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want that.
No.
No. So that would be really great if we could have, even the parks. I mean, if the, the metropolitan, the Midland Metropolitan Parks would take it.
Yeah.
That'd be a good park thing because it, if you want exercise, you can go up and down those hills a couple of times. You wouldn't have to do any more exercising for a week, but they're good. But that's, that's one place. And now, what about the, what do you call the, the lights, you know, the, that generates electricity with the sun?
The solar panels?
Solar panels, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's...
That's a biggie.
That's a great thing. That's...
Just out of curiosity, how many do we have? How many acres do we have of them?
I think there's, right now, there's around, I think one is twelve, and the other one's about twice that, about thirty acres. So that would be around forty, forty acres.
About forty acres.
And it generates when they're, you know, at full capacity, which is on a nice sunny day, not like today. But on a good day, they'll generate eight to ten percent of the total power required in Wadsworth.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of electricity.
And it's, it's cheap because it's what they call behind the meter.
Right.
You don't have to pay transmission costs on that.
That's a biggie. That's a biggie.
Well, yeah.
That's a biggie.
That's a big.
And, you know, I think that the pair, the general public thinks of the council as sitting around deliberating on what sidewalks to fix and so forth. But tell us some of the things that intellectually you feel that the council does. And then I want to tell you what I think is the impetus for it.
Okay. Well, thinking of, you know, things that were, that my background helped on, that nobody knows about, even most others on council, is that we had an EDIC from the EPA probably ten, fifteen years ago to reduce the phosphorus in our effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. And we had this engineering company come in and tell us, "Well, I did some background research on, and found out there's two ways to get rid of it. You can treat it chemically, or you can treat it biologically. And biologically, uses no extra chemicals, and is, works, seemed to work very well." So we talked to them about doing it, and they said, "Oh, no, that'll never work." So the decision was made to go with the chemical treatment. So they did that, and they did that for four, five years. And another company came in and said, "Hey, we have, why don't you try biological?" So they've tried biological now, it's cut their chemical use in half. And they listened to the outside people, but they wouldn't listen to me. So I would say that's probably one of my chuckles that I've enjoyed.
Actually, I had heard about the fact that they were doing that, and I was going to make a public statement that they could have, I mean, this is horrible, but they could have saved a ton of money if they just would have listened to the person who knows what to do. We had a similar situation when we, when not we, when they put in Walmart. I happen to know, because I was born here in Wadsworth, and I was born here at the coal mine years, that there were some, at one point, we had twenty-eight coal mines up there. And coal mines are holes in the ground, and dirt never stays in the same spot if it can move.
And it can move with wooden support, and wood rots.
That's right, and they can move. So I told them that, said, "Oh, no, 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 uh-uh." We did a geological, and it was perfectly safe.
Yep.
How many tons of concrete did they have to put in just to make sure that that didn't sink? Tons and tons and tons of concrete because they, they don't listen. And this is one of the things that I was going to say, but you helped me to say it so well. The fact that we have intellectual people who have backgrounds in something that is so esoteric as chemical engineering. Why don't we go out and check with this guy over here, who was your student to do the work when we could come to you? And of course, you make the big bucks as a councilman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You make the big bucks. And they would have had to pay through the notes that he did that done. Why don't we, tell us some of the other kinds of things that you feel that you could be able to do if they would ask you.
Well, just recently, one of the things we've done is, the county came to us, you know, and wanted to do Holmstook Park, have that as part of the county system. Which I thought was a wonderful idea because, you know, they have resources at city, they have full-time park employees. They know how to take care of parks and all that. I thought that was a wonderful opportunity. And we didn't get much pushback from council. Council was probably ready to jump right on that. So it took a little while to get our contracts together, but that's been done. And I think that's a, going to be a great advance because...
Oh, I think so, too. You know, the reason we didn't have too many parks is that we had so much farmland that we didn't need them at one point. Now we have no more farmlands, we have to have the parks. But the one thing that really is helpful, I think, and you're quite right in saying it, that the Midland County Park System has a levy that takes care of money. Whereas what do we have, what do we have in Wadsworth? We don't have any, any kind of farm money.
It comes out of the general fund.
General fund.
Yeah, so it's whatever you allocate.
Comes out of daddy's pocket.
Yep.
Whereas they have that, so if they were to come down to the brickyard and...
Well, they have the expertise, too, to know how to do it.
Yes, they do. They have the trucks, and they have the machinery, and all of those kinds of things.
Well, the trail, we got to mention the trail, too. That's been a great advance, I think.
The trail, yes.
And to have the volunteers that take care of the trail house, which is...
Yes, that's right, exactly, right, the trail house. The, we used to use the streetcar line to walk to town.
I bet.
And it was, of course, it was, in nineteen thirty-five, they took the streetcar out. I remember when they did that. And the streetcar bed was nice at that time, but then it started growing up and so forth. So they had to do all of the work to get it done. But I really, really am so pleased that council supported that so, so well. Can we go to another area here that has been very much of interest, I think, not only to Wadsworth people, but also to, to people in general? The way that Wadsworth has always functioned has been using good common sense on things such as expenditures. We don't spend any money that we don't have. And I think that's been the philosophy of Wadsworth for many, many years. And we also have, take that attitude that, you know, if you take care of the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. How do you, in your own mind, having worked, or rather, having lived through part of the Depression, how does that affect you when you try to make a decision about money?
Absolutely. I don't want to spend any money that we don't have to, whether we have it or not.
That's right, exactly. Whether you have it or not, you don't spend it.
Right.
Unless, and that's one of the things that I believe that, and this is going to be something that I'm going to be hearing about if I say it aloud. But I think that our younger generation, and this is one of the reasons we're interviewing you today because you're one of the older generations.
Yeah, I'll admit to that. I'll admit to that.
You're a bit of that, the oldest one ever in a hundred seventy-five years, a hundred twenty-five years. But I think that a younger generation has been so accustomed to spending that they don't look at the attitude about saving pennies, you have to save pennies if you want to save dollars.
Why, when they're given it, we've had all that free money from COVID and now they're talking about forgiving student debt, I mean, where's the education on how to save money and spend wisely, it's not there.
You can't do that, you can't do that, no. And it bothers me that I see legislative bodies, not only in the city, but also elsewhere, I see legis- legislative bodies giving money away. We had no money at all during the depression. And I'm sure that unless you were extraordinary, you didn't have any either during the depression.
Well, I don't remember going hungry, but I don't remember having a lot.
We didn't have it, well, of course not, we didn't have very much at all, so it takes a person who has not had to make sure that you don't overspend what you don't have.
Absolutely.
And I like that. And now then, another one, uh the ideas that has come through my mind here that I wanted to talk about. In the area of chemical, uh chemistry, not chemical, but in chem- in chemistry, what are the kinds of things that we can do right now? In your mind, that is, you know, as a chemist now, not as a councilman, but as a chemist, what are the kinds of things that we can do right now to make sure that the types of chemicals that we are using in our water, for, let's just take water, for instance. The types of chemicals we're using in our water right now, what kinds of things should we be doing to make sure that they're not going to hurt us in the long run?
Well, we're, in our water, for example.
Yeah, let's take water just for an example.
There's nothing we're putting in our water that's really going to harm us. I I do have a worry about whether we're going to have enough of the chemicals to treat our water, do you, do you re-? See asbestos, and that's the area I worked in, chloraldehyde, making chlorine and caustic was one of my projects. And that uses asbestos to cover the diaphragms that separate the electrodes that make chlorine and caustic. Well, they're banning asbestos totally in the US, and really, the only use for it now is in making chlorine and caustic. But if they ban that, which they're saying they're going to do, that'll put sixty percent of the chlorine production in the country out of business.
And what will that do to our water?
Well, you won't have chlorine, so what do you do without chlorine? Use ozone, well ozone will kill the bacteria that's in there to start with, but it has no residual. By the time it gets into the lines and into your house, all the.
Bacteria's back in there.
The bacteria's back in there, whereas chlorine has a residual, it will stay there and be active by the time it gets in your house. So there's a lot of things going on and in the EPA, which is, that's doing it, that has a long-term effect that they're not realizing, so I'm worried about our water supply in the future if they continue down this road, but as far as what's in our our water, really, we have.
No problems.
No problem, you get the report every year and it's available to everybody and our water is really some of the best around.
Um that's that's good to hear. Well, the reason I asked the question, is I do quite a bit of reading, well, not near as much as I used to because as you age, your eyes don't work that well all the time, particularly. But I mean, they might be working, but they pretty well fall asleep by the time you read two or three paragraphs. I've been reading about this business of the of the chlorine and I knew fully well that we use chlorine and people say they can taste it in the water, I don't taste it in the water myself. I've never tasted it. But um we're using chlorine and we're going to be out of chlorine pretty soon, as a matter of fact, that's not the only one that they're going to be out of, understand. But they're going to be out of chlorine pretty soon. And what happens if we use ozone, and I didn't realize that ozone was a, one of the things that they could possibly use as a substitute. And I don't know anything about the ozone, but if you put the ozone in and by the time it gets to me in my glass of water, it's full of germs again, what's it going to do to me?
Potentially not going to be good for you.
So there. What kinds of things as a chemist now can we possibly do? In nineteen thirty-seven, Harvey Firestone Junior, I think, or one of the Firestones, called upon all of the high schools and colleges to figure out a way to make rubber from something other than rubber plants.
Yes.
Remember that?
They're, they found some plant out in Arizona that would grow in the desert, they could make rubber out of.
Yeah, something that, and I remember that the kids in Wadsworth, this is nineteen thirty-seven, the kids in Wadsworth for the entire summer um collected milk from milkweeds.
Yep.
Do you remember that?
I remember that, I think I was part of that.
You were part of that.
I think we collected milkweed out in Kansas.
Yeah, we collected milk from will, uh milkweeds because we, we're not going to use water, uh the rubber from Af- or from uh well, Africa. And um didn't work, my understanding is that the reason it didn't work is that somebody said that it shouldn't work because we had interest in. How much do you think, Bruce, the quote asbestos thing is political and not good science?
Oh, there's no, nobody in the chloraldehyde industry has ever got asbestos. I mean, I think you can almost state that fact, I worked with asbestos all the time, but we knew how to handle it properly. As long as it's always wet, when you handle it, there's no airborne fibers, you know, and and in the uh plant, they'd take these big bales, they looked like huge cotton bales, have you ever seen that? They'd hose them down in the water before they ever opened them, they'd drop them into a vat of water, open them underwater, they were, there was never any airborne asbestos. Safe as could be, safer than anything around and uh it's totally political. It's got to be totally political, nobody's ever been in a chlorine plant to see how it's handled, that's making the rules, that's my belief.
The um, you know, irrespective of what we're talking about in terms of of uh party politics, the word political here is a bad word for, because it's devoid of the intellectual aspect of what's going on.
Right.
And it bothers me that, well, at our ages, we don't have to worry about too much drinking, but too much more water, I don't think. But our kids and our grandchildren, your great-grandchildren are going to be drinking water.
Absolutely.
And we need to have someone to come up and speak and say, this, this is the wrong thing to do and I don't care who is the head of whatever organization is doing it. We have to use the scientific approach
Yeah.
to make sure that our bodies are going to be safe, because these are the only ones we have. You know, when you talk about the um people and animals and so forth that are extinct, we don't want to be one of those.
Right, right.
And we're going to be one of those pretty soon.
Well, hopefully, common sense will prevail and this ruling won't go into effect.
And you heard me say just at the, at the very beginning, that one of the reasons that people respect you is that you have common sense. And that's what, that, I'm on, I'm going to jump onto another thing right now quickly, if I can, about your common sense. And this is going to be a little bit on the hard side, but you lost your wife a few years ago.
It's been ten years this year.
Ten years, yeah, a wonderful person, I enjoyed her humor and enjoyed her enthusiasm. And I'm sure we miss her, there's no question about that. Does the fact that you are heavily involved with people, does the fact that you're heavily involved with an organization, in this case, your um consomatic responsibilities, does the fact that you are involved with your companions help?
Oh, yeah, they're all part of the family.
They're part of the family, that's part of the family. Now, the reason I'm asking that question is that many people withdraw when they have grief. You elected not to, what gave you the strength not to? And I think this would be a lesson for other people who are going to come and probably request that.
Well, I enjoyed all those activities.
That's one, enjoy is one, enjoying is one.
And my wife was actually, she was in politics long before I was, she was on the school board in Corpus Christi, Texas. She fought, she fought school busing down there.
Oh, really?
Because she was for neighborhood schools, she didn't care who went to the school, she just wanted children walking to their neighborhood schools.
That's what they're supposed to do.
They got an organization together and she got elected to the school board in Corpus Christi. And way before I even thought about any politics, so I guess, you know, being in politics and doing that is kind of carrying on, you know, her legacy in a way to uh stay involved in the politics and loving Wadsworth and wanting to do what it could for the city.
How do you come, I wasn't going to ask this question yet, but um how do you come from Kansas to Wadsworth, was the 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 difference has to be considerable, is it?
Not really.
No?
You know, my little town, Osage City, they they were just like Wadsworth, they were a coal mining town back in the uh late eighteen hundreds.
Well, that's what we have here.
Well, that's why the Santa Fe Railway came through Osage City, because they had coal mines there.
That's why the Ri- the Area Railroad came through Wadsworth.
Uh-huh, they had their own electric generating company.
We had that.
And actually, I remember walking by the electric generating plant every day. They they had diesel, big diesel generators and this was this probably twenty-foot in diameter flywheel running on the pump there, the brand, or the generator. I remember how fascinated I was by that, seeing that big wheel turning every day. So and, you know, had all the utilities there that wa- and still does, that Wadsworth had, so, you know, there's so many similarities between Osage City and Wadsworth.
So in other words, you came home.
Yeah.
You actually came home.
It's just like being home, you know, except it's ten, Wadsworth's ten times bigger.
Yeah, what um what kinds of um thoughts do you have about? Were you here when that was a farmland?
Well, I came here in nineteen sixty-one.
Well, it was, it was already built up at that time.
Well, pretty much, but not a lot, but Dress Brothers was the big store that we went to, when everything else was closed.
But all of that, all of the houses were in board four right now, just about everything was.
Most of them weren't there.
No.
Because I remember we we had friends that lived on wherever that street is, is on to the east of Holmstuck Hill. That, the street that goes along Holmstuck Hill on the east. Sun- that comes off of Sunset. I forget what it's called, but anyway, we used to have to go there for, and play baseball on that open field down there in what's now Holmstuck Park, it wasn't a park then, and there were no houses to the west of that.
No, not at all, as a matter of fact. That changes my question a little bit, because I thought that you had come when all, everything was already built up.
No, it, Wadsworth was not eight or nine thousand people when we moved here.
Eight or nine thousand people, yeah, well, I can still ask the question, however. How did you feel when you saw this beautiful farmland there that the Coons family had, for instance, where the hospital is and all of that? How did you feel when that became housing?
Because we weren't here, we were down Corpus Christi then.
Oh, I see, okay, you were down at Corpus Christi.
But that was an eye-opener, to live from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen eighty-two in Texas and then come back to Wadsworth and see how it changed, that was an eye-opener.
That was an eye-opener, yeah. See, I live in, I've always lived where I live, I was born there, since ninety-two years ago, I was born there. And it was all farmland. We had only one hundred people in Silver Creek at that time.
Wow.
Now we have six hundred homes
Yeah.
in Silver Creek, six hundred homes in Silver Creek. No farms. All of the farms are gone because they have housing developments.
Sure.
It's a heartbreak, because I cows were my friends.
Yeah.
And the open fields, and I just wondered how you felt when, but you didn't, you never really saw them when it was all farmland. Where the hospital is right now was a Coons farm.
Oh, yeah, I remember, I remember that in the sixties, yeah. But you know, I got two different perspectives. Osage City is just now, is today like it was when I graduated high school in nineteen fifty-one.
Hasn't changed at all.
It hasn't changed. Wadsworth is a whole different world. Now, what do I prefer? Would I move to Osage City if, or to Wadsworth if I had the choice? I'd move to Wadsworth every time.
You would move to Wadsworth.
When we lived here in the sixties, we had to go to Fairlawn for a lot of things. I remember we had to go up there to Lucky Shoes to get shoes for the kids, because nobody in Wadsworth had kid shoes like that did.
That's right.
So we were running up to Fairlawn all the time, now I don't have to leave Wadsworth for anything. Me personally, I like that, you know, so if I had my choice, I'd take Wadsworth as it is now, rather than Osage City.
Well, that's good to hear. What are your plans for the future?
I got a whole bunch of woodworking projects I need to do.
Do you do woodworking?
Yes.
No, you haven't told us about that, what kind of woodworking do you do?
Oh, I've done a lot of pro- well, mostly furniture. I I went, well, I had a big project for the Methodist Church, they lost that big beech tree that was.
Yes, right.
We thought it was a hundred and twenty years, over a hundred years old, but turned out it was only eighty years old.
Eighty years old.
But we got seven hundred board feet of lumber out of that tree.
Really?
If you can believe it. I don't know whether you've ever worked with beech or not.
It's very difficult to work with.
Is the worst, I mean, it's alive, it's alive, I mean, you cut a piece of beech and the next day, it's not this size that you cut it to. Anyway, so I built, I built a pulpit, I built a communion table, I built a series of display cabinets for the north ex of our church. And I'm in the process now of building another uh bu- bookshelf, display bookshelf for them.
Oh, that's so nice, really.
They'll pretty much use up all that wood that we have.
Yeah, now um beech is very hard, right?
Well, that's what they made the old English planes out of, you know, the wooden planes were all made out of beech because it didn't wear.
The um Wadsworth at one point, this is a hundred fifty years ago, had so many beech trees that they used beech trees, the blank, the planks from the beech trees for sidewalks.
Well, it'd make good sidewalks, I'm sure, they wouldn't wear.
They wouldn't wear at all, as a matter of fact, they had sidewalks on this, on the match shop hill and the injector hill. They finally took them out in nineteen two or three or something like that, but they had been there for many, many years and people walked up and down them. And the unfortunate, the only bad part about them was that when they got wet, they were slippery. When you say they were alive.
Yeah.
They were really slippery, they were, people would fall all the time, but the beech trees. Now, um is this something that you learned to do, or is this something that you like to do, or what?
Well, I had a, in the eighth grade, I had, I took woodworking.
We had to do the same thing.
Yeah, and that's where I learned the basics and then, of course, then when Norm Abram had his shop, I watched all that he did. Was jealous of all the tools that he had.
Yeah, he has some pretty good tools.
So I thought, well, when I retire, I have time to do that, so I did, so when we built our house here, I said, Marsha, I don't want anything in the basement, that's for my shop, so I had the whole basement.
I, I remember the first time that it was in um seventh grade, we had to make a rabbit out of wood. And I traced the rabbit on the, from some kind of a a traceable thing.
Yeah.
And I must have had my thumb and went all the way around my thumb. So the rabbit had a roof on his neck. When people asked me about that, I didn't know how it happened. When people asked me about that, I didn't know how it happened. And I guess I told them that, well, this rabbit had a growth on its neck. So that's, that's why I did it. But the, there are three, three more things I would like to, to ask really quickly if I can. I mentioned to you, you know, what is your future, what are your future plans? Uh, if you're like me, uh, you don't make any plans more than ten minutes ahead of time because of our age. However, what are the, what, what is the one thing in your mind that you still would like to do as long as you can?
Well, well, like I say, I've got some personal woodworking projects to, I wanna finish. See, my gr- my great-grandkids, as they grow.
That'd be a good one. That'd be a good one, yeah.
Maybe when they get a little bit bigger, I'd like to take them back to Silver Dollar City in Branson. That's the most fun amusement park I've ever been to. They have a roller coaster in a mine there.
In a mine? Wow.
I mean, it's a real, it's a real mine. And uh.
Where do they fit it? Cause the mines are about four feet high.
Well, I'm not su- it's, well, it's a roller coaster, you know, like, with the mine trains. It runs where the mine trains used to. Yeah.
I was thinking of something, you know, like, do you want to see Wadsworth downtown?
Oh, what do I wanna see for, what's the future for Wadsworth, I see? Well, I'd like to see it, you know, continue to grow, cause uh, remember John uh, who was, he was the auditor, John.
Moss.
Moss. He told me one thing. He said, we were talk, we were debating over the growth of Wadsworth. And he said, well, you either grow or you die. And I thought, you know, that's true. I look at Osage City and, you know, it's.
Dying?
It's not really dying, but it's not prospering. And a lot of towns in Kansas, the town my folks grew up in, Atlanta, Kansas, was a town of five hundred people when my grandparents lived there, and now it's a town of two.
Two people.
Well, about. I'm not sure. There may be more than that. But uh, you know, it's a dead town. And so I, I believe that either grow or you die, but you gotta grow wisely.
That's the important thing.
And I'd, I'd like to see Wadsworth continue to grow and prosper, but in a controlled way that, I mean, benefits everybody.
The um, yeah, as I said, I had three quick questions. That, the first one was, what do you want, you know, what, what do you want for the future? Number two, if you had, say for instance, the ability to say, I'm gonna live another ten years, or something like that, would you make any changes at all in what you are doing, and I'll tell you the reason why after you tell me?
Okay. Would I make any changes? No. I, no, I'm pretty, I get up every day. I'm happy with being here. I'm thankful I'm here. And uh, I'm happy with what I'm doing.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that, because if I were analyzing this, I would say that what you are doing is what you want to do, and if you don't want to make any changes, you're happy.
Yeah.
And we want you to be happy. The third and the last one, we're gonna be ending up on our, our time here, but the last one's gonna take a little bit longer to, to, to respond to. At the present time, you have nineteen years of service in the city of Wadsworth. And probably, as long as you live, you'll probably be the auditor, the consulman. I mean, there's no question that you voted every single time, so there probably not gonna be anybody who's gonna replace you. Will there be ever a time, and this is, this is gonna come down to something that you may not even have thought of, is there gonna be a time when you're saying, I'm just too tired to continue. I wanna quit?
Well, yeah, I've thought about it.
You have thought about it.
But it's not that I'm gonna be too tired to quit. It's gonna be when I lose the mental ability to quit.
Well, you, that, that, that won't happen.
But it could happen overnight.
I know it can.
Yeah, it could, and, and I guess my thought would be, if that starts to happen to me, and you know, other people are gonna notice it before you do yourself. I hope they tell me.
They probably won't. They'll be afraid to.
Cause you know, that, that's my biggest fear, that I'll be on council someday and they'll say, Bruce, how do you vote? Who, who? You know, so, yeah, I don't want that to happen.
Well, let's hope that does not happen. We've come to the end of our time, but I want to say two things to, to, to leave with you. Number one, you might have been born in Kansas. Was it Kansas?
Kansas, yep.
You might have lived everywhere else, but I want to tell you that we are very, very happy that you chose Wadsworth and you're still living here. That's number one I want to tell you. Number two, I want to tell you is that if anyone can brag about having made contributions to his or her, so I can be politically correct, although I, in this case, I just mean a he, anyone who can be really, really pleased and proud to have made a contribution to Wadsworth, I would say that Bruce Darlington has been the poster child for having done so. And thank you for doing that, Bruce, and we'll have to say goodbye to you at this point, because we've run out of time.
Well, thank you for the kind words, Caesar. It's been a real pleasure.
Genuinely meant, genuinely meant, genuinely meant.
Thank you so much.